Good morning, welcome to the Supreme Court of the United Kingdom. This morning, we are hearing the appeal in the matter of the Queen on the application of File Coast Farms Limited against File Borough Council, which concerns a neighbourhood development plan made by the Borough Council in respect of St Anzon C. The particular issue is whether an application for judicial review by the appellant, File Coast Farms Limited, was made within the statutory time limits set by Section 61N of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990. I'm Lord Lloyd Jones, and today I'm sitting with Lord Briggs.
Good morning.
Lady Arden.
Good morning.
Lord Sales.
Good morning.
And Lord Stephens.
Good morning.
The appellant, File Coast Farms Limited, is represented by Estelle Deane and John Fitzsimons. And the respondent, File Borough Council, is represented by Jonathan Easton. Miss Deane.
My lord, thank you. As your lordship has indicated, and as the court is aware, the short question this morning before the court is whether the Court of Appeal erred in its interpretation of Section 61N of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990, I'll refer to that as the 1990 Act, and as a result, misstated the scope and limits of the planning court's jurisdiction to hear judicial review challenges to neighbourhood development orders and neighbourhood development plans. Our answer to that question is yes. Based on the plain language of Section 61N and its internal and external context, and in light of the purpose of the provision, an overview of the six main points in our case is set out on pages E59 and 60 of the bundle at paragraph 6. In brief, those propositions are as follows. First, the ordinary and natural meaning of Section 61N shows that each subsection operates via a simple procedural trigger to permit a judicial review claim to be brought at each of the final three steps of the process of making an order or a plan: publication of the local authority's decision based on an examiner's recommendation, declaration of the results of a referendum, or publication of the decision to make the final plan or order. The subsections do not interrefer. Nothing in the ordinary and natural meaning of the words suggests that the court is required to look behind whether the simple procedural step has been taken in order to discern what the "real basis" is of the claimant's challenge, and whether that arose under one of the other subsections, thus precluding the claimant from bringing the challenge and circumscribing the jurisdiction of the court to hear challenges to "undoubted abuse of power", to adopt the words of Lord Stain in part. Second, the Court of Appeal's interpretation does not align with the purpose of Section 61N or the mischief that it seeks to address. It is a main thrust of the council's case that the obvious intention of Parliament in providing the separate time limits for challenges to different stages in the process is to ensure that legal flaws in a plan are uncovered and addressed prior to the plan being made and becoming part of the statutory development plan for the area. We say that this purpose cannot be discerned either from the language or the operation of Section 61N and the wider statutory scheme. The subsections each permit a claim to be brought at a stage in the making of a plan or an order, which may indeed be the final step in that process, or which may, in the case of Section 61N 2 and 3, be intermediate stages. If a challenge is brought at an intermediate stage, nothing in the language or operation of Section 61N prevents the plan or order from being made despite the legal challenge ongoing. Further, we say that it should be presumed Parliament did not intend a statute to have consequences which are objectionable or undesirable, or absurd, unworkable, impracticable, anomalous, or illogical, and that the Court of Appeal's interpretation of Section 61N leads to such undesirable practical results. Third, the Court of Appeal's interpretation is out of step with the approach taken by courts and analogous statutory schemes to other development plan documents. The council's case draws out certain differences between the process of examining and making local plans, and that applicable to neighbourhood plans. But we say that those distinctions are of no moment, and the analogy that we seek to draw is apt, particularly as both processes result in plans that become part of the statutory development plan. Once a local plan has been submitted for examination, legal challenge is obliged to await the final making of the plan. And the courts have observed that whatever the dis-benefits of that approach, there are obvious countervailing benefits, including in not delaying the administrative process and not bringing a challenge which might in any event be unnecessary because the plan or order is not made. Fourth, the Court of Appeal's interpretation is out of step with the approach taken by the courts to multi-stage decision-making. This is most acutely evidenced in relation to neighbourhood development orders, which operate to grant planning permission for a range and type of development, including housing development. Although the steps in a multi-stage decision-making process are different, a grant of planning permission under Section 70 of the 1990 Act is directly analogous to a grant of planning permission through a neighbourhood development order, a proposition not challenged by the council. Yet, the Court of Appeal's interpretation means that judicial review works in diametrically opposed ways for the two types of planning permission. In relation to Section 70, there is an opportunity to challenge at an intermediate step, and also an opportunity to challenge at the final stage when planning permission is granted. But that is denied in relation to a neighbourhood development order. The council does not, in its submissions, address neighbourhood development orders at any point apart from acknowledging that Section 61N applies to such orders. Fifth, the Court of Appeal's interpretation prevents a challenge being brought at the point where a claimant's rights have crystallised, if the claimant could have raised such a challenge at an earlier stage. That again is most acutely evidenced in relation to neighbourhood development orders, as the claimant's rights or interests will only come into being or be affected when the order is made. It is also relevant to neighbourhood plans, which, contrary to the council's case, do crystallise some rights when they are made, particularly in relation to the allocation, for example, of housing. Sixth, and finally, the Court of Appeal's interpretation fails to promote good administration, including resulting in far greater judicial involvement in the local decision-making process and unnecessary preliminary and procedural hearings. My lords and my lady, these six points arise against the background of a judicial review claim brought by the appellant challenging the making of this St Anzon C neighbourhood plan. Contrary to the recommendations of an examiner, the appellant's site was not included within the settlement boundary designated by that plan. Two High Court judges have confirmed that the appellant's grounds of challenge are arguable and merit full consideration. But for the interpretation given to Section 61N, the claim would have proceeded to be heard in the High Court. The agreed factual background to this claim is set out in the Statement of Facts and Issues at pages 47 to 52, and I do not intend to go any further into the factual background. My lords, my lady, I'll therefore move on to develop each of my six points in order. But before doing so, it's necessary to spend a little time in setting out the statutory scheme. And this is for two reasons. First, an important basis of the Court of Appeal's interpretation of Section 61N was its view that there is a bespoke and complete scheme for legal challenges to specific decisions and actions taken in the course of the statutory process, which is self-contained and which leaves no gaps to be filled by claims for judicial review. And your lordships and ladyships can see this at paragraph 31 of the Court of Appeal's decision on page E130. And in order to engage with this, it's necessary to set out the statutory scheme in a little detail. Secondly, of course, the whole statutory scheme provides the external context within which Section 61N should be interpreted. So by way of preamble then to setting up the statutory scheme, it is helpful to understand in my submission how that scheme applies both to neighbourhood development orders and neighbourhood development plans. Section 61E to 61Q and Schedule B of the 1990 Act concern neighbourhood development orders. And I'm not going to ask the court to go there quite yet, but just to note that those sections, Section 61E to 61Q and Schedule 4B, fall within Part III of the 1990 Act, which concerns control over development, i.e. that part of the Act which makes provision for what development means and whether permission for development is required and how it can be obtained. If your lordships and ladyships turn please then to page 339 in the bundle. For those using bookmarks, it's bookmark 4 in the first authorities' bundle. The court will see that by virtue of Section 38(c) of the 2004 Act, the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004, on page 339, all sections of Section 61F and M to P, as well as Schedule 4 of the 1990 Act, and then further on, page 340, at subsection 5a, parts of Section 61G of the 1990 Act are made applicable to neighbourhood development plans. So the 2004 Act brings the scheme for neighbourhood development orders and applies, most but not all of it, to neighbourhood development plans. Again, it's useful to note that the part of the 2004 Act where those sections are found, to which I've just referred the court, is the part that concerns development plans and development documents. So although the facts, standing back from those two sets of submissions, although the facts in this case arise in relation to a neighbourhood development plan, and Section 61N is understood in this case in relation to such a challenge to a plan, the court's judgment on the proper interpretation of Section 61N will apply with equal force to neighbourhood development orders and challenges to such orders. A neighbourhood development order is defined on page 403 of the bundle, and if I could ask your lord and ladyships to turn to that provision. It's defined in Section 61E of the 1990 Act. And it's defined as an order which grants planning permission in relation to a particular specified neighbourhood area for specified development or for development of any class specified in order. So to give some practical examples, a neighbourhood development order could grant permission for housing on a specific site in an area, small or large. It could grant permission for, for example, change of use of all types of property in a particular area, for example, along a high street, from use for commercial use to, for example, use as restaurants, cafes or bars. It could allow, for example, the upper floors of all shops in a neighbourhood area to be converted to flats of a certain size. It could permit all houses in a certain area with a certain size of garden to build separate dwellings in the garden. So the type of development which could be granted permission through a neighbourhood development order is wide-ranging and considerable. There is development which a neighbourhood development order cannot grant, which it cannot grant permission, and that the court will see on page 411 of the bundle at Section 61K. That excludes certain developments by defining excluded developments. And essentially, without taking the court to the underlying documents, that means that neighbourhood development orders are not capable of granting permission for certain minerals and mining developments, for certain concrete or cement production, things like oil refining, power stations, steelworks, chemical plants, roads, ports and estuades. Turning then to neighbourhood development plans, those are defined in the 2004 Act. If your lordships and ladyships turn up page 337. The definition is to be found at Section 38(c) subsection 2. And this provides that a neighbourhood development plan is a plan setting up policies, however expressed, in relation to the development and use of land in whole or any part of a particular neighbourhood area specified in the plan. And the court will have seen from the authorities that neighbourhood plans too can have quite wide-ranging and important impacts. As the Court of Appeal confirmed in the case of Larkfleet, which is Authority 26, neighbourhood plans can allocate sites for housing. And as the Court of Appeal, as the High Court clarified in the Gladwin Developments case, that's Authority 23, neighbourhood development plans can include policies for the location of a proposed number of new dwellings, even where there is no development plan document setting out, excuse me, strategic policies for housing. So the upshot of that is that neighbourhood development plans can be the only part of the statutory development plan in force which allocates land for housing and steers the strategic placement of development, including housing development. My lords and my lady, with that preamble and set of definitions, I turn then to the statutory scheme. And this is set out in our written case at paragraph 12, from 361, page 361 onwards. And we set out a brief overview of the seven steps in the process for making an order or a plan. And I will touch on each briefly. Simply to note at the outset, the Section 61N is concerned only with steps 5, 6 and 7. But the earlier steps in the process are important antecedent steps, which is why, as I say, I'll spend a little time on each of them. So turning first to step one. The process of making an order or a plan is initiated by what is described as a qualifying body. Parish councils can be qualifying bodies, as can an organisation or body designated as a neighbourhood forum for a particular neighbourhood area. And the court can see this for orders at Section 61E6 and for plans at Section 38a12. A local planning authority may designate a body as a neighbourhood forum if that body meets certain criteria. And if the court can turn to page 405, your lordships and ladyships will see there under Section 61F subsection 7, the criteria by which a local authority will decide whether a body should be designated as a neighbourhood forum. The local authority must take into account the matters in Section 61F7 and must give reasons for refusing to designate a body as a neighbourhood forum. The designation of the forum is one aspect, or the qualifying body being a parish council. The second aspect of the first step is the designation of a neighbourhood area. That is addressed in Part 2, Regulations 5 to 7 of the 2012 Regulations. For your note, that is at page 350 of the bundle. So that's the first step in the statutory process. The second step is that the qualifying body prepares a draft of the order or the plan. And the qualifying body is obliged, in so doing, to publicise the draft order or plan in order to bring it to the attention of those who live or work or carry on business in the neighbourhood area. And for your note, that's Regulation 26 of the 2012 Regulations, page 366 of the bundle for orders, and it's Regulation 14, page 357 for plans. Those two regulations and Schedule 1 to the 2012 Regulations oblige the qualifying body to consult in quite a wide-ranging way. They are obliged to consult specific bodies and organisations on the draft order or plan whose interests are affected. For example, they may be required to consult bodies like English Heritage. So that's step two of the plan, the preparation of the order or plan. Step three can be seen at page 426, and that's Regulation 1 of the 2012 Regulations. And the court will see that under Regulation 1, on page 426, that entitles a qualifying body to submit a proposal to the local authority for the making of a neighbourhood development order or plan, so long as that proposal is accompanied by a draft of the order or plan and a statement setting out the reasons why it should be made. The local planning authority may only consider those proposals if various formal procedural requirements are met, and those are set out on page 430 of the bundle at paragraph 6 of Schedule 4B. And the local authority, the qualifying body, has to be notified by the local planning authority if it is satisfied that the order or plan complies with the requirements, and the authority must give reasons if they consider that they are not so satisfied. Then, a page earlier, on page 429, paragraph 5 of Schedule 4B, the authority may also decline to consider a proposal submitted to them if they consider it to be a repeat proposal under the criterion in that paragraph. If the local authority is satisfied that the proposal should proceed, then it is required to take another round of consultation and to invite representations, and so it must publicise the draft order or proposal. And the court can see that at Regulation 23, on page 368, in relation to orders, and at Regulation 16, on page 360, in relation to plans. A final point to note is that if a draft order, and this is just for orders, concerns development to which the Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations apply, then the local authority is obliged to perform the requisite consultation required under those regulations at that stage as well in relation to an environmental statement, and that's Regulation 232, on page 368. So I pause there at the end of step three to address in part two aspects of the Court of Appeal's foundational reasoning for its decision. Your lordships and ladyships will have seen that the Court of Appeal sets out five points, which it articulates as the basis for its interpretation of Section 61N. And these begin on page 130 of the bundle at paragraph 31 of the Court of Appeal's decision. And there, the Court of Appeal held, as I trailed earlier, that Section 61N and that the section is a bespoke and complete scheme for legal challenges to specified decisions and actions taken in the course of a neighbourhood plan process. While this is part, well, in that initial part of the paragraph of the Court of Appeal's judgment, that analysis is qualified to the extent that it refers to specific decisions and actions taken in the course of the preparation of a neighbourhood plan. The latter part of the paragraph is less qualified in my submission. So your lordships and ladyships will see that there's a reference to Larkfleet. And then, five or six lines up from the bottom of paragraph 31, the Court of Appeal goes on to say that it is self-contained, it is self-contained and comprehensive, it relates to and relies upon no other plan process, it leaves no gaps to be filled by claims for judicial review outside the statutory scheme itself, no alternative or additional statutory procedure, no alternative time limits. And then there's a reference to the whole case. So the impression there is created of a self-contained scheme, entire self-contained scheme, where there are no gaps outside of Section 61N admitting of judicial review proceedings. And that impression is in my submission cemented by the second point that's made by the Court of Appeal at paragraph 32, where the court says that Section 61N does not provide for a single stage of the neighbourhood plan process to be the point at which it is possible to bring a claim before the court. It does not rule out as premature any challenge started before the process has fully run its course, when the plan is finally made. And then it goes on to make the point it does not require or indeed permit the claim to wait its moment. And that reference there to not ruling out as premature any challenge again gives the impression on the part of the Court of Appeal of the statutory scheme that we're looking at as being a complete bespoke scheme and the legal challenge provisions being without any gaps. But it's not in my submission clear that those two foundational points take into account the three steps, early steps, that I've just set out for your lordships and ladyship. There are a number of decisions, crucial antecedent decisions on which the process of the statutory scheme is based, which are public law decisions required to be taken in light of the provisions of the 1990 Act or the 2004 Act to which I've just referred the court. But those are not referred to at all in Section 61N. And to take just two examples, at step one, the local authority could refuse to designate a body as a neighbourhood forum. And this would stop the process in its tracks. At step three, the local authority could refuse to consider a proposed order or plan because it considers that to be a repeat proposal. There are criteria that the authority is obliged to apply to that. And again, that decision would halt the process completely so that it could not arguably even be brought within any of the latter stages to which Section 61N directly refers. It cannot, in my submission, be the case that a prospective neighbourhood forum is debarred by Section 61N from bringing a judicial review claim, challenging the refusal to designate it, or that a qualifying body would be prevented from bringing a judicial review challenge to a decision that a proposal is a repeat proposal. And to this extent, in my submission, it is not the case that there's a complete bespoke statutory scheme to which the only judicial review path that is relevant is Section 61N. As is, at the very least, seems to be arguable that judicial reviews arise in relation to the earlier steps, the antecedent steps. So this, at the very least, undermines the Court of Appeal's starting point in its analysis.
Miss Deane, can I ask you, when do you say that challenges could be brought to the Miss Dan, could I ask you, when do you say that challenges could be brought to those earlier steps?
In my submission, those earlier steps are challengeable on the basis of conventional judicial review proceedings. So they would be permitted outside of section sixty one N, within the normal time limits for judicial review, which in the case of planning and decision-making is six weeks from the point of the decision. And of course, the significant difference between a judicial review brought under section sixty one N and one brought under the normal rules of court in relation to judicial reviews is that the time limit under the statutory provision is the time. It is not extendable by the discretion of the court, whereas a time limit for judicial review under the normal court rules would permit of some ability for the court to extend time.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Miss Dan, just on that point, I mean, it's pretty well established, I think, in ordinary planning judicial review, that it's difficult for a party to get an extension of time. I think Finn Kelsey is the classic authority that says that if you've got a judicial review that you want to bring, for instance, against the planning commission, you have to get on with it. So I'm not sure that, just saying that in ordinary judicial reviews, there's a discretion to extend time takes you very far if the ordinary assumption is that you're, in this context, expected to get on with it pretty promptly.
My lord, yes. Two points arise in response. First, just to focus on the way in which this point is being developed. If it is the case that the Court of Appeals' analysis is based on the bespoke statutory scheme not admitting of judicial review other than under section sixty one N, my submission is that's not right. But secondly, your lordship may be aware, and I'm trying to remember the name of the case, not before the court, I think it's Thornhill Hall, there are cases where challenges, even to a grant of planning permission, may be brought not even, not just outside the six-week period, but indeed very long after the decision has been made. Now, absolutely, those sorts of challenges are unusual, and it may be more usual for there to be a tiny element of flexibility just around the six-week period. But your lordship is absolutely right that the six-week period was imposed in planning matters in order to encourage claimants to get on with bringing their judicial review claim. In my submission, though, that is not a point against the analysis that I've just set out for the court, because even if the same prompting or the same celerity is required under the normal judicial review proceedings, that doesn't dull the strength of there being a possibility of judicial review being brought outside of section sixty one N.
Yes, thank you.
My lord, Lord Stephens.
Just trying to think through, somebody was wishing to take the point that this was a repeat proposal, and it should not have been considered by the council. Would they be entitled to wait until the very end of the process before bringing a judicial review claim? And perhaps the distinction is that whether there is or isn't a repeat proposal isn't something that is publicised at the earlier stage. But I was just wondering, at what stage does the six weeks run from the decision of the council to accept the application, despite the fact that it's a repeat proposal?
Well, my lord, there are publication obligations throughout the statute, and I speak under advisement, and I'm sure I'll be told by my junior if that's not right, but I think there is a stage at which there's an obligation on the authority to publish its decision about how it's going to proceed. And there's certainly an obligation on the authority to provide reasons if it's not going to accept a proposal because it considers it to be a repeat proposal. In answer to your lordship's first point, on the appellant's analysis, in the normal way, with any challenge to a plan or a judicial, or the making of a planning permission, a grant of planning permission, a claimant would have a choice to bring a judicial review claim at the stage which we're discussing, i.e. if the local authority agreed to proceed with the plan because it didn't consider it to be a repeat proposal, or to raise that point, to choose to raise that point within the administrative process itself. So it would be open, of course, to any individual or group or developer who thought it was a repeat proposal, to raise that point at a number of stages in the administrative process. And it may be that that is the preferred route by the imagined claimants that we're discussing, but if that does not succeed, then there would be an ability later down the line to challenge under section sixty one N. My lord, all says.
Yeah, sorry, I may have lost the thread on the repeat proposals. I had thought, but I may have read it too quickly, that if it's a repeat proposal, the planning authority has a discretion not to proceed with it. But are you saying that if it's a repeat proposal, they have an obligation not to proceed with it?
No, my lord, there's, as I understand it, your lordship is right that there's a discretion not to proceed, but plainly that is a discretion which is capable of being challenged. For example, it may be that the discretion has been exercised, and the authority has failed to take into account a material consideration, one of those considerations that's required to be taken into account under the Act.
But wouldn't the basis for that sort of challenge be that the local authority has not taken forward a proposal, and someone is saying, on the basis that they say it's a repeat, and someone is saying you should have taken forward my proposal, it's not a repeat?
Yes, so that's the situation I was postulating first. As I understand, my lord, Lord Stephens was asking a slightly different point, which is imagine the local authority says this isn't a, this is not a repeat proposal, and then moves on within the stages in the plan-making process. Could a body, a claimant, that was of the view that it was a repeat proposal, a judicial review at that stage, or raise the point further on down the line? That's as I understood my lord, Lord Stephens' question.
Right. And what form would that challenge take? Would they be saying, you should have thought about whether this was a repeat proposal at the earlier stage? If you had thought about it, then you should have concluded in the exercise of your discretion that it should not be brought forward?
Yes. Imagine, for example, that the plan or proposal very obviously meets one of the criteria set out in the section for it being a repeat proposal. Nevertheless, the authority has continued. I'm not necessarily suggesting that that would be the best judicial review claim in the world, but it's certainly feasible.
Right, yes, thank you, I understand.
Grateful. My lords and my ladies, unless there are any further questions, I'll return to our trip through the statutory scheme. And we've made it to stage four in the process, and that is when there's consideration of the draft order or plan by an independent examiner. So if the local authority is satisfied that the matters in paragraphs five and six of Schedule B have been complied with, then paragraph seven requires the local planning authority to appoint an independent examiner, and that's at page four hundred and thirty one of the bundle. And this is the first time in the process that formal consideration will be given by the examiner to whether the order or the plan meets what is described as the basic conditions. These are set out in paragraph eight, sub-paragraph two of Schedule four B, and those basic conditions are on page four hundred and thirty two of the bundle. And the court will be aware that many of the challenges that have been made to neighbourhood development orders, and indeed that may be capable of being made to neighbourhood development plans, are based on whether the order or plan meets those basic conditions. The court will see that those conditions are set out on page four hundred and thirty two include, for example, whether it is appropriate to make the order or plan in light of national policy and guidance, whether the making of the order or plan is in general conformity with the strategic policies in the development plan for the area, and whether the making of the order or plan breaches or is otherwise incompatible with retained EU obligations. The examiner is required to report on the draft order or plan, and may only recommend that the order or plan be made with or without modifications, or may propose that the order is refused. And the court can see that in paragraph ten of Schedule B, two pages on, on page four hundred and thirty four. There are only a limited number of types of modification that are available to an examiner, and those are set out at paragraph ten, sub-paragraph three. And they are linked to the basic conditions and compliance with rights in the European Convention on Human Rights. So once the examiner has made those considerations, step five arises, and that's when the examiner has reported, and that, of course, that report could, of course, be to proceed with the making of the plan or the order because the examiner is satisfied, or could be that the plan or the order should be refused. The local planning authority is obliged by paragraph twelve, on page four hundred and thirty six, to consider the recommendations, that's paragraph twelve two A, to consider each of them and the reasons for them, and paragraph twelve two B, to decide what action to take in response to each of the recommendations. And there are a variety of options that are open to the authority, which fall under the general rubric of paragraph twelve two B in deciding what action to take. The authority may, within limits, make its own modifications to the draft plan or order, and that the court will see it, Regulation twelve six, also on page four hundred and thirty six. It can, the local authority can propose a different set of recommendations from that proposed by the examiner, and if the authority chooses that course, then the authority must notify certain prescribed persons of the proposed decision and its reasons for it and invite representations. And that's on page four hundred and thirty seven of the bundle, paragraph thirteen. So the authority has a considerable degree of flexibility in how it responds. Indeed, if necessary, the authority may refer the issue on which it differs to independent examination, and the court can see that at paragraph thirteen two, sub-paragraph two on page four hundred and thirty seven. So it's certainly feasible at this stage that the local planning authority may make a series of decisions under paragraph twelve two about the content of the order or the plan and how it might progress. And indeed, the court has one example of this in the bundle of authorities, in Maynard's case, which is on page one thousand and eleven of the bundle. And Maynard's case is authority number twenty nine. And the court will see on page one thousand and eleven, at paragraphs four and five, very briefly, this was a neighbourhood plan where there was a certain recommendation made in relation to certain types of community facility, and there was a difference of opinion between the examiner and the local authority as to whether a nightclub was to be considered a community facility. At paragraph five, your lordships and ladyship will see that the examiner submitted his report to the local authority, he recommended the nightclub be removed from that list of community facilities. The authority did, was not minded to accept that recommendation, so they undertook a further round of consultation. Now, as I understand the statutory scheme, they would be obliged at that stage to publish a decision which would be reviewable under section sixty one N two, because that would be a decision under paragraph twelve two of the Schedule four B. So the local authority indicates that it's not minded to accept that recommendation. It undertakes a further round of consultation, and then following that and appraisal of its responses, the authority decided to accept all the examiner's recommendations, modified by the demission of the nightclub from the table, and then decided that that should move on to referendum. So there were, in Maynard's case, at least two decisions that were made under paragraph twelve, and each of which theoretically would be reviewable under section sixty one N two. Alternatively, if the authority is not satisfied that the order or plan meet the requirements in paragraph twelve four of Schedule four B, i.e. meeting the basic conditions and complying with the statutory obligations, then it's open to the authority, well, then, in fact, the authority is obliged, I must be careful with my language here, paragraph twelve, sub- paragraph ten on page four hundred and thirty seven. The authority is obliged to refuse the proposal. And it's feasible that the authority might refuse the proposal despite the examiner recommending that the proposal proceed to referendum. And as I've flagged in my submissions on this step, this is the first step at which section sixty one N addresses the potential for legal challenge, because section sixty one N two permits a court to entertain proceedings for questioning a decision under paragraph twelve of Schedule four B, if it's brought by judicial review and within the period of six weeks, beginning from the day on which the decision is published. And there are requirements in the scheme for that decision to be published.
Miss Dan, is the order in which these subsections appear in section sixty one N of any significance?
My lord, we say yes. We say that it is notable, and indeed, a helpful interpretative observation, that section sixty one N begins with what in our submission is the umbrella provision, so is the provision which permits questioning of the final making of the plan or order. And then at two and three, permits challenge to the earlier steps, which we've described as step five and step six, so the local authority's consideration and then the holding of the referendum. The council takes a different view of the analysis that the court should place on the way in which the section is structured, but in my submission, at the very least, the structure of the section supports the appellant's interpretation, and indeed, in my submission, the appellant's analysis is the more compelling of the two.
Do you?
Moving then on to step six in the process, step six is the holding of the referendum, and there are a number of requirements, as one can imagine, for the holding of such referendums. They're set out at paragraphs fourteen to sixteen of Schedule B, at pages four hundred and forty to four hundred and forty two, noting that paragraph fifteen on page one and forty one applies only to neighbourhood development orders. The question that is to be asked in the referendum, the information that is required to be publicised, and how, when and where voting can take place, are set out in regulations that are made under paragraph sixteen on page four hundred and forty two of the bundle. Once the referendum has taken place, if the result is that fewer than half of those voting have voted in favour of the plan or order, then that effectively ends the process, as the authority would declare the result but would not be empowered to take any further steps. but would not be empowered to take any further steps in relation to the order or the plan. If, of course, more than half of those voting have voted in favour of the plan or order, then the authority is under a duty to proceed, that's section seven, or step seven, but just before I get there, to flag that step six, the declaration of the result of the referendum, is the second stage at which section sixty-one N is available for legal challenge, that falls under section sixty-one A three, which permits a challenge to, in order to question anything relating to a referendum, under the paragraphs just mentioned, paragraphs fourteen and fifteen of Schedule B, if the claim, only if the claim is brought within six weeks of the day that the result of the referendum is declared. And finally, step seven, that's the final step in the process of making the plan or order, at section sixty-one E of the nineteen ninety Act, and at section thirty-eight capital A of the two thousand and four Act, the proceedings are set out, or the requirements are set out. And just for your lordship and ladyship's note, these sections mirror each other. So section sixty-one E is regarding orders and section thirty-eight A is regarding plans. Essentially mirror each other, although there are some differences in the structure. Section sixty-one E four and section thirty-eight A four impose a statutory duty on the authority to make the plan or order if more than half of the votes cast are in favour. And that is only, that duty is only lifted if the authority considers that the making of the order or plan would breach or be otherwise incompatible with retained EU obligations or convention rights. That's in section sixty-one E eight and section thirty-eight A six, where the authority is obliged to consider that question. If the duty does apply, then the authority is required to make the order as soon as reasonably practicable after the referendum is held, and it must publish its decision on whether or not to make the plan and the reasons for that decision. And that is in section thirty-one E eleven for orders and section thirty-eight A nine for plans. One final port of call in the statutory scheme, if I can ask your lord and ladyships to, your lordships and ladyship to look at page three hundred and thirty-five of the bundle. That's in the two thousand and four Act. And it is the section that deals with development plans. And the court will see there at section thirty-eight three capital A, so up to those of the way down the page, so section thirty-eight three capital A, that for England, a neighbourhood development plan forms part of the development plan for the area, the statutory development plan, as soon as that duty to act under section thirty-eight A or A arises, i.e. it forms part of the statutory development plan as soon as there's a declaration of the result of the referendum. But by section thirty-eight brackets three capital B, the section below, it will cease to form part of the plan if the authority decides that it should not make the plan. So if it decides that there's a reason under EU or human rights obligations that prevent it making the plan. So in a sense, after the referendum result is declared, the neighbourhood development plan is part of the development plan documents, the statutory development plan for the area, but is contingently so. I turn now to developing my six points, and I'll begin with the ordinary and natural meaning of the provision. The propositions that are relevant to statutory interpretation are set out at paragraphs thirty-seven to forty-seven of our written case. That's pages seventy-two to seventy-five. And it is clear from the respondent's written case at paragraph fifteen on page one hundred and three, that these are agreed. The difference is simply one of emphasis. The council emphasises determining or discerning the legislative purpose. And by contrast, we build up the analysis with the foundational step being the language, the plain language of the specific enactment, and then considering the internal and external context of that enactment, including against the background of the purpose of the statute. We rely in particular in that regard on the case of Edison First Power. And for your lord and ladyship's note, that's authority twenty-two at page eight hundred and fifty-six of the authorities of the bundle. We rely in particular on Lord Millet's findings at paragraph one hundred and sixteen, that it must be presumed that Parliament intends to act reasonably, and so did not intend a statute to have consequences which are objectionable or undesirable or absurd, which I've flagged at the outset of my submissions. Our submission is that the Court of Appeals' interpretation leads to such undesirable practical results. It's notable that Lord Millet goes on in paragraph one hundred and seventeen to say that the strength of this presumption against unworkable or absurd results plainly depends on the degree of unworkability, if I may paraphrase. And the more unworkable, the less likely it is that Parliament intended the result. So bearing this in mind, and beginning with the words, the wording of section sixty-one N, which is, in our submission, the enactment that is relevant. Section sixty-one N one is on page four hundred and fourteen. And your lord and ladyships will see in turning that up that it provides a court may entertain proceedings for questioning a decision to act under the sections that we just looked at, section sixty-one E four or eight, read as thirty-eight A four and A six for plans. If two qualifying conditions are fulfilled, A and B, i.e. it's brought through judicial review, and the claim is filed before the end of the six weeks, beginning with the day after, the day on which the decision is published. And we place emphasis on those words, the day on which the decision is published. In our submission, this is an easily understandable administrative step. Publication of the decision is required by section sixty-one E eleven or thirty-eight capital A nine. And each of the windows within which the claim can be brought, so the window under section sixty-one N one, and indeed, the windows in the other sections, are all in our submission triggered by simple procedural steps, publication of the decision or declaration of the result. And in our submission, focusing on the language of section sixty-one N one, the Court of Appeals' approach to understanding the word decision in section sixty-one N glosses the plain language. It adds a third qualifying condition to that section, that the substance of the challenge could not have been raised under section sixty-one N two or three. There is in our submission no basis for that to be a necessary implication of the use of the word decision in section sixty-one N one. Particularly as the relevant window for bringing the claim begins, as I said, with a clear, simple administrative action, publication of the decision, and because the section does not refer, it does not intend to refer to any of the other sections. Now, the court would, yes.
Shall I go first? Just very quickly, I wanted to ask why it could not be said that if Parliament has funnelled various applications through sixty-one N, as for instance in section thirty-eight C two, that you should not therefore interpret the section as the Court of Appeal did, so that you would have to ask whether the decision was one that could be brought within sixty-one N?
In my submission, there are a number of reasons for that. First, the wording of the section focuses on an administrative step. It focuses on whether the decision has been published or not, and that is the trigger for the window being opened. So although the framework in which that happens is that the challenges to the decision as taken under that section, the window is triggered by the administrative act, and in our submission, the administrative, the simple procedural administrative act is what is in issue here. And secondly, as I'll go on to develop, there are very good reasons not to imply a substantive element to that understanding of decision. First, because it glosses that word, and second, because of the impractical and absurd results that occur.
Thank you.
I just wanted to be absolutely clear in my understanding of the case you're making. You're submitting that steps one to three could be challenged when this final decision is made?
My lord, this was a point that troubled us, to be fair. It may be, it may be that there are ways in which the type of challenge that would be brought at steps one to three would infect the decision-making at the final stage of the plan. And it may be that they would not, because they were addressed within the long process between step one and the final step of making of the plan. But in our submission, if they fall, if that nature of challenge properly can be made against the final making of the plan, i.e. it can be brought under that rubric, then in our submission, it is right that the challenge can be brought at that stage. And that is entirely in line with the way every other development plan and planning permission process works, that even if a claimant, a potential claimant, has identified a flaw at the very earliest stage, let's take, for example, a claimant can identify a flaw in a scoping opinion right at the very outset of a long series of stages in the making of an application for permission to develop. That can be brought via challenge to the eventual making of the decision granting permission. So it's analogous.
And sorry to jump ahead, but sixty-one N two, then you would have an ability to challenge at that earlier stage, and you'd lose it, and then it would be revived again at the last stage?
My lord, I think it's the, the yes, in brief, my lord, yes. And again, that is entirely in line with multi-stage decision-making, that an ability, there's an ability to challenge at an earlier stage, but that does not then preclude challenge at the later stage. And it's that step, your lordship alights upon what is exactly the crucial step at which the Court of Appeal takes a very different approach from the approach I'm urging on this court, that the Court of Appeal recognises that section sixty-one N two allows for challenge at an earliest stage, but then turns that into a requirement to challenge at that stage, on pain of losing your chance to challenge later on. And in fact, what our submission is, is that this transmutes what is a simple procedural question, i.e. has the decision been published, has the requisite decision been taken, into a complex substantive question about what is the substance of this decision, when could it have been brought, could it have been brought at an earlier stage? And if so, the jurisdiction of the court is not available to it. So in effect, my lord, my lords and my lady, what the court has done is to resurrect the question which was previously asked in order fifty-three about when a ground of judicial review application, the grounds of application first arose, and your the court will be very familiar with the test that Mr Justice Laws, as he then was, imposed in the Greenpeace case, discussed in detail in the case of Burkitt later on, about what the real basis is of complaint. And the court has
Duty, my delight, it's right. Does your assertion that the Court of Appeals' approach to section sixty-one N one involves the legitimate importation of is how you started your analysis of this subsection, depend upon reading these three subsections as they are enabling judicial review, rather than restricting certain kinds of judicial review, the basic entitlement to which lies outside the statute in common law, for example, subject only to CPR time limits? Because it seems to me that if you read sixty-one N one as an enabling power, i.e. you can't do it unless sixty-one says you can do it, I can quite see why you say that there might have to be an implication. You could do it, but not if, and that's, I think, what you read in, other than because of the subject matter of two or three. But if you think of sixty-one N one and two and three as simply imposing restrictions by general right to bring judicial review, then you don't need any implication, do you? You just look at section sixty-one N two. You apply that to a judicial review application made within six weeks of the final decision and ask, yes, but is this, is this speaking to challenge a relevant earlier step? If it is, you can't do it. You don't need any implication in one or two or three at all. You just see whether you fall foul of any of these three restrictions.
My lord, I think I understand the thrust of your lordship's question, and the interpretation that is proposed by the appellant in my submission is the only interpretation that fully respects the fact that each of these subsections require a claim to be brought only if it is brought in relation to a specific administrative action being taken by the authority, i.e. the publication of the decision or the declaration of the referendum. And fully respects the fact that what is subject to the only if is the decision or the declaration having been made or having been given. The Court of Appeals' interpretation and the interpretation that's proposed by the council glosses the words only if, so that the sections interrefer in a way that they simply do not. And it was open in the appellant's submission to the court, to Parliament, forgive me, to craft a set of sections which do interrefer. And in fact, there is an example in the bundle of where a a scheme that excludes or that limits the potential for judicial review claims is set out in a way that the provisions of the section interrefer. And that's section one hundred and thirteen. There is absolutely explicit that all the sections interrefer, and that if the challenge is brought at a particular stage, that's when it must be brought. In my submission, the appellant's analysis of section sixty-one N one is the only analysis that reflects what the wording actually says, and that the only two criteria that are imposed are ringing by judicial review and within the six weeks of the particular decision being published or being declared. I don't know if that answers your lordship's question.
I'll think about it. Thank you.
I'm very grateful.
Yes, I think Lord Sales is next.
Well, I think my question probably is to pursue the same line of thinking. This provision seems to assume that generally proceedings can be brought by judicial review, which of course they can be generally, but then introduces a series of restrictions on that general right, which is the significance, as it seems to me, of the words only if. You can bring, a court can entertain proceedings only if the judicial review has been brought within a particular time period, from taking each of the subsections particular defined points. So if one looks at subsection two, and the relevant decision is one which is caught within subsection two, might it not be said that subsection two itself imposes a mandatory time limit, the significance of only if? And that it's not so much a, a, a matter of the provisions needing to cross-refer between themselves because they're just a series of separate time limits. And if one adopts um your interpretation of section sixty-one N, in fact, might it not be said that you're undermining the force of the words only if in subsection two? Because as I understand it, you're saying that in answer to my Lord, Lord Stevens, um you ca, you can bring proceedings essentially to question the decision under paragraph twelve of schedule four B, so within uh the subject matter of subsection two. But you can do that in proceedings brought later than the time limits specified in subsection two because you say the time limits all start running again um from uh the final decision under subsection one. So.
My Lord.
Sorry, you go.
My Lord, there, there are two responses to that. First, in my submission, that glosses the word decision to mean substantive decision. And second, that does entail the sections needing to interrefer because it, it's, it's not disputed in this case that um the, 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 the grounds of potential unlawfulness raised in relation to section sixty-one N one, i.e. the final making of the plan, properly related to flaws arguably still present in the plan. So there's unlawfulness in the decision to act under section sixty-one E four or section thirty-eight A four, that unlawfulness is there. But the Court of Appeals' interpretation and the approach just proposed by your lordship would mean that uh that unlawfulness cannot be challenged despite being present in the decision because it was capable of challenge at the earliest stage because it was unlawfulness that arose and then persisted. And in the appellant's submission, that is to, to do two things uh which violate the language. First is to gloss decision, so it means substantive decision. And second is to include in section sixty-one N one a third requirement, i.e. it, the, the grounds could not have been raised at any earlier point.
But how can you?
The language doesn't do that.
But how can you question the decision other than on substantive grounds? In order to question the decision, you have to have grounds of judicial review to question it, don't you?
My Lord, yes, but the, the, the act is talking about questioning, questioning the decision to act under section sixty-one or section thirty-eight A um from a point when the decision is published. And although plainly there must be grounds on which to question the decision, that doesn't mean that the word decision has to be understood as the trigger for bringing the claim in the substantive decision. It's the procedural decision, it's the administrative step which triggers the window. And then the question is, are your grounds of claim proper substantive grounds of claim for judicial review that are arguable?
Yes, thank you.
My Lord, Lord Stevens.
Well, I just bring you back to sixty-one N three. Doesn't that also cover steps one, two and three? Because the referendum comes after that.
My Lord, again, potentially, if the, if, if the unlawfulness could be properly brought within the scope of of that section, then it would permit challenge to be brought at that stage.
Well, the, the example you gave uh which is a repeat uh application uh and my turning that back to front uh saying that um somebody might, the council might say it's not a repeat application, but somebody might think that was one, Wentsbury unreasonable. Well, the time to challenge that would be uh sixty-one N three time, wouldn't it?
It, it might arise at each stage and I don't shrink from that. And indeed, um with, with an eye on the time, if, if I, if I get to develop my sixth point um on the, the practical implications of what happens. Uh on, on my lordship, on your lordship's understanding, if the exclusionary approach is taken, uh a potential claimant is obliged to bring three judicial review claims. A claim at section sixty-one N two, which is the earliest stage at which this point could be raised, a claim in section sixty-one N three in order for the referendum to be quashed and a claim at section sixty-one N one if the plan goes on to be made. And in my submission, that is um, that leads to absurdity.
Now, Miss Steen, you've got some way to go.
I do, and I shall take.
If necessary, we will allow you to eat a little bit into the time allowed for reply.
I'm, I'm most grateful.
But it's important.
If I may declare, if I may declare a wish to do that now because I uh estimate that it will take me half an hour from this point to get to the end of my opening of, of my submission. So if I may take fifteen minutes from my reply um and use that now.
Yes, very well.
I would be most grateful. Um, my Lord, I'm also conscious then that it's eleven forty-five when the court might usually have a small break and I've just professed to be carrying on for another half an hour rather than just fifteen minutes.
All right. Well, we, 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 we'll take a short break now, five minutes and then we'll, then we'll resume.
I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Steen.
My Lord, I'm very grateful. Uh moving on to my second point, which concerns purpose. Uh the, the court will be aware that the Court of Appeal articulates what it considers to be the purpose of section sixty-one N um on page one hundred and thirty-one of the bundle at paragraph thirty-seven. And the court says that uh first, it enables the claim to be brought straight away when the grievance in question arises and second, to prevent them being put off to a later stage of the process or to its end. And in our submission, the first purpose is correct, but the second is incorrect. And indeed, as I mentioned earlier, is the crucial error. Uh, two points in response. Um first, uh the case of CAT, which is a bookmark at uh eight, Authority eighteen um at paragraph forty-nine on page seven hundred and forty-six um addresses this. And CAT stands for the proposition that the opportunity to challenge does not affect the right to challenge. Second, it's a main thrust of the council's case that the obvious intention of Parliament in providing separate time limits for challengers to the different steps in the process was to ensure that legal flaws in the plan are uncovered uh and address, and, and addressed prior to the plan being made and becoming part of the statutory development plan for the area. We say that this purpose cannot be discerned either from the language or from the operation of the section. In relation to the language, there's nothing in um any of the sections under sub, under section sixty-one N that prevents the pro, the process of making a plan or an order from proceeding despite a challenge having been brought. And turning to the wider statutory scheme, that is directly contrary to the purpose asserted by the council. Because as I pointed uh to uh the court earlier this morning, by section thirty-eight brackets three capital A of the two thousand and four act, in England, the plan, the neighbourhood plan becomes part of the statutory development plan upon approval at the referendum. And so no matter with what alacrity a claimant brings a challenge under section sixty-one N three to the result of the referendum and certainly under section sixty-one N one, uh the neighbourhood plan will in those circumstances already be part of the statutory development plan. Um furthermore, the duties that are imposed on the local authority to progress through the stages of the process are not suspended by a challenge being brought under section sixty-one N two or section sixty-one N three. So in, in my submission, this is quite crucial for the purpose that is suggested um on the council's part. Um it's clear that the duty to move on from the referendum results and to make the plan um is imposed and then qualified in the statute. And if I just take section um thirty-eight A one and thirty-eight A eight and A six, forgive me, uh as the example, the authority, the duty on the authority to make the plan once the referendum has been, the result has been declared is only suspended or does not arise if the making of the order would otherwise breach or be incompatible with a convention or an EU obligation. And it was open, of course, to Parliament to include uh legal challenge under section sixty-one N uh as a basis for suspending the duty to make the plan or the order. But it did not do so. Third, that there are, um in the practical operation of the scheme, uh clear examples of where a challenge at an early stage under sixteen sixty-one N two um has not prevented or stood in the way or uh made an authority wish to halt the process. Uh the Hall case at Authority twenty-five, the Maynard case to which we've already um gone at Authority thirty, uh both of those uh were challengers which were brought at the earliest stage, but the process um went on or moved on. And indeed, Maynard is interesting because the challenge under section sixty-one N two was brought on the day of the referendum itself. The six-week period for challenge under section sixty-one N two encompassed the day of the matter that would give rise to challenge on the section sixty-one N three. So in light of this, the appellant invites this court to find that the purpose of section sixty-one N is to make explicit that claims may be brought straight away when the grievance arises so long as they are brought within that six-week period. But that this does not prevent a claim being brought by the time the plan has made if there remain proper grounds of challenge that have not been addressed through the administrative process. And we address in our written case how the drafting of section sixty-one N addresses the difficulties that were caused in terms of premature decision or premature judicial review applications under section one one three of the two thousand and four act um evidenced by the Hillington case, and that's at paragraph sixty-six of our written case. So much for the statutory purpose. Then moving on to my third point, the uh Court of Appeals' interpretation is out of step with analogous statutory claims. And I've developed this point a little in response to some of the court's questions, and so I'll take it shortly. Uh, there is an analogous nature between local plan making and uh neighbourhood plan making. The appellant's position is not that they are the same or that the level of scrutiny in each of the processes is the same um or indeed that the steps are all the same. Uh there are clearly differences, but those differences are not of um any merit when it comes to understanding uh the analogous nature in this case. They are analogous because there is a stepped statutory process by which an inspector or an examiner considers the draft plan and whether it complies with the statutory criteria. Local plan challengers, section one hundred and thirteen of the two thousand and four act oblige, oblige the challenge generally to be brought at the end of the process. Uh apart from some challenges which might be brought to antecedent steps. And it's striking that the case law which deals with section one one three um emphasizes that there are obvious benefits in a procedure that allows a challenge to be brought only after the statutory decision-making process has run its course. And Manidown Authority ten um is particularly in issue here um at page five hundred and seventy-nine um of the authorities. And the court will see there on page five hundred and seventy-nine in Manidown um that the obvious benefits of waiting until the end of the process are emphasized. And it may be that this gives some response to the questions from the court um in my previous submissions where there's concern about the long time lag between a point of arising and potentially being capable of being brought and the final plan or order being made. And Manidown at page five hundred and seventy-nine um brings out that there are, although there might be difficulties that are uh caused by that process, there are also um obvious benefits to requiring, as the local plan process does, to requiring um a claimant to wait until the end of the statutory um process um in order to bring a challenge. Primary amongst them being allowing that claimant to raise the issue during that statutory process and allowing the statutory process to take its course. Um thereby obligating the need for un, for unnecessary uh judicial review claims if the issue is dealt with um during the statutory scheme.
Would you give me a paragraph number for that bit of Manidown?
Uh, my Lord, yes, it's, it's in a long paragraph, paragraph seventy-seven.
Thank you.
Uh and it's, it's after a quote from the Huntingdon case.
There's something wrong with the pagination because that's my paragraph five hundred and eight, my page five hundred and eighty.
Ah.
But I've got it. Thank you very much.
Uh, one final point to make about this analogous um set of circumstances. Uh in our submission, it is really quite stark that in a local plan process, which uh by its nature is a very significantly wide-ranging process with a number of parties involved, with the significance and assessment of underlying evidence, a lot of time and money being spent on the process, that in that process, a potential claimant is obliged to wait until the end of the process before and the plan being made before bringing a challenge. And in our submission, that speaks strongly to there being no difficulty with section sixty-one N one permitting a claimant to raise a legal point that properly still exists in the making of a plan or an order at the point when the plan is finally made, even if that ground arose beforehand. What the Court of Appeals' interpretation does is in effect the opposite of what happens in the local plan process. In the local plan process, a claimant is obliged to await the final making of the plan in order to bring a challenge. In the Court of Appeals' analysis of the neighbourhood plan process, the claimant is obliged to act as soon as the grounds are by, and will lose the, the chance to act later on down the line. Uh and in our submission, it is a much more harmonious way of weaving section sixty-one N into the tapestry of provisions around plan making to understand that section um in the way that the appellant urges on the court. That then is my point three. Point four relates to multi-stage decision making. Um and I, I began before uh the court intervened with some questioning by referring um to the Greenpeace case. And if I may ask the court just um briefly to go to that authority, that is tax, that's authority number fifteen. Um and if the court can look at page, what I hope for everybody is page of six hundred and seventy-six. No, it won't. Yeah, six hundred and seventy-six. Um which is internal page four hundred and twenty-three of the, of the authority. At the bottom of the page, uh Mr. Justice Laws, as he then was, in his analysis of um when the judicial review claim should be brought, um refers to a Court of Appeal decision um concerning um the Avon Waste Disposal Authority um concerning the way in which a statutory process was undertaken. And in my submission, it's um, there's a direct parallel here because the part of the Court of Appeal judgment relied on um by the judge in the Greenpeace case describes what is a continuous administrative process. Uh and the point that Mr. Justice Laws bring, as he was then, brings out is that in his uh is that in his analysis, where there's that sort of process, the real basis of the decision that's being challenged should be understood, and there should be strict discipline such that the substance of the challenge is brought at the earliest possible stage. And in my submission, that line of reasoning is fully responded to by the House of Lords in the case of Burkitt. That's authority seventeen. And if I can ask the court, please, to look at in particular page seven hundred and forty six of the bundle, which is paragraph forty seven. Because this is where Lord Stain addresses the Greenpeace case and explicitly analyzes whether the assessment of the real basis of complaint and requiring a claimant to act at the moment that that real basis arises, whether that promotes certainty and administrative, good administrative proceedings, or whether it in fact promotes uncertainty. And your lordships will be well aware that the decision of the House of Lords is that that sort of analysis promotes uncertainty. And we rely strongly on that because precisely the same uncertainty in our submission, as is deprecated in Burkitt, would arise in this statutory process if the word decision in section sixty one N one and two and well, sixty one N one in particular, is understood as the substantive decision, i.e. the real basis of challenge being to the substance of that particular decision. In the appellant's submission, the prior paragraph of Burkitt is also helpful. So your lordships and ladyship will see that at paragraph forty six, Lord Stain emphasizes that procedural legislation favors certainty and simplicity over complexity and uncertainty. And in particular, where one is dealing with the procedural process, that easy and uncomplex process is to be preferred. And in my submission, the appellant's approach makes it absolutely crystal clear. It could not be easier or more clear when your six weeks starts to run to challenge a particular decision. The period or the window opens when the decision is published and when the referendum result is declared, and it closes six weeks later. And there is no uncertainty about whether the court will have jurisdiction because you may have brought the claim at an earlier stage. That uncertainty which is introduced by understanding what the real basis is of the decision is removed on the appellant's analysis. One further aspect to mention in this point is that one must always understand that one must look at these matters not just through the lens of a developer who may be, but not always, but may be well resourced and may have advisors who are advising the developer at all stages through the making of the plan or order process. Section sixty one N must be available properly to local groups and to individuals who may not have the benefit of legal advice throughout the process, but who may be able to have recourse to legal advice once the plan or order is made. And it is in our submission invidious to envisage a scheme where the citizen's right is lost at the final making of the plan or order at the point when their rights crystallize, which is what I'll move on to, because there was a failure to bring a challenge at an earlier stage. Moving on to my fifth point, which is when rights are crystallized. I set out earlier this morning the wide range of development which may be granted permission via a neighbourhood development order or the wide range of development which could be allocated or prioritized in a neighbourhood development plan. And so the making of a plan or an order might have very significant impacts on individuals, on businesses and on their rights. And on the Court of Appeals' analysis, neighbourhood planning of this type will be the only part of planning law of which we are aware. Where if the claimant does not challenge at the earliest stage, when they are unaware of whether their rights or interests are in fact going to be impugned by the making of the plan or order, they are precluded from bringing a challenge when their rights are crystallized, when the plan or the order is made. And in our submission, that is an absurd position. Potential claimants fall victim to the lottery of how the planning permission is being achieved. If the planning permission is sought through the usual section seventy process, the claimant can challenge it when the decision notice is issued. But if the planning permission is being sought via a neighbourhood development order, then the claimant would be shut out in those circumstances for failure to raise it at the earliest possible stage. Claimants are therefore potentially required to bring a judicial review claim well in advance, well in advance of knowing whether there is to be a final determination of their rights or of knowing whether an issue that they've raised during the administrative process will in fact be resolved in their favor, obviating the need to bring a claim at all. And finally, my sixth point in relation to promoting good administration. I mentioned in response to, I think, my lord Lord Stephens' question, that one of the absurdities of the analysis of section sixty one, which is on the Court of Appeals' analysis, is that multiple judicial review claims are necessitated. And Crown Hall Estates is an example of this, that's authority twenty one. The court will see, and this is on page eight hundred and two, paragraph four, I think, that the challenge in Crown Hall was brought under section sixty one N two, so at the earliest stage. That was in July twenty fourteen, the referendum was held. Then there was a second claim that was issued under section sixty one N three that was joined. And had the plan been made, then presumably a third claim would have been necessitated in order for the plan to be crossed. On the Court of Appeals' interpretation, a claimant with a cogent challenge at stage two is obliged to bring it at that stage and so may face the burden, which is not just the administrative burden and inconvenience on the court of having to issue through judicial reviews, but is an unfair burden on claimants as well. And the court will be well aware that each judicial review comes with attendant court fees and with further legal costs. And while there might be some that are well resourced and prepared to bear such additional costs, not all developers and landowners, not all individuals and community groups will be in that position, particularly individuals and groups for whom one judicial review, let alone three, are a daunting prospect. In the appellant's submission, it is deeply unfair to interpret section sixty one N one in a way which obliges a claimant to act at the section sixty one N two stage and potentially have to bring multiple claims, particularly within a section or a set of sections which is aimed at promoting localism. The corollary of the impact of having multiple judicial reviews is that claimants may be obliged to ask for interim relief, again necessitating expense on what may potentially be contested interim hearings. And that's has happened in the Lockhart case at authority twenty five. And finally, there is the lack of certainty point, which I have already addressed, in claimants being uncertain as to what the real decision might be discerned by the court as being the basis of the challenge. And the court might be faced at the section sixty one N one stage of having to trawl through a number of grounds of claim and identify which grounds were actually to an earlier decision and which grounds are properly to the section sixty one N one decision. So from the foregoing, and in my final minutes, my submissions are as follows. The case of Edison Power, which is at authority twenty two at page eight hundred and thirty six, sees Lord Hoffman in the majority, saying that the degree to which there are unworkable consequences, the general scheme of the legislation and the background against which it was created will shape how the statutory language is to be understood. And in our submission, all three of those lie in favor of the appellant's interpretation. In particular, the background against which this legislation was created supports the appellant's interpretation. Neighbourhood planning is designed to give communities direct power to develop a shared vision for their neighbourhood and to engage with the planning process. An interpretation of section sixty one N that shuts out individuals, developers or organizations, or even in fact a qualifying body from challenging the final making of a plan or an order is to be avoided. Subject to any questions which the court may wish to ask, those are my submissions on behalf of the appellant.
Of your reply time, just so you're aware of that.
Yes, my lord, I'm respectful.
I think the court will now take a few minutes to take stock of what we've reached. Thank you very much. And can I ask you all, please, to stop your videos? Miss Deane, we're grateful for your submissions, thank you very much. Mr Easton, we don't need to call upon you.
I'm grateful. So the court will now take time to consider its decision. I should say that we're very grateful to council and those notionally metaphorically sitting behind council and just out of vision for the preparation of the case and for the very helpful submissions that we've had and also the written submissions. Thank you very much indeed, the court is now adjourned.